Hello YouTube, as some of you will already know, I'm actually a Douglas City councillor. But I've never really made a video about it or given any more details. So I figured it's just about time that I do make a video about the work of the councillors, explain a little bit what it is we do, how we do it, where we work, and I'll give you a bit of background on local politics on the Isle of Man. So that here behind me, that is Douglas Town Hall, or maybe we should call it City Hall now, although we haven't received the letters patent yet, so technically it's still Town Hall, I guess. We call it Town Hall. So let's start with a look at Douglas Town Hall. Now, I can't show you the whole thing because it is a working office. There's a hundred plus people working there. I don't think they would appreciate if I stomp through their office and disturb their day. But there are three rooms within it that I can show you that are relevant to our work as councillors, and that's the committee room, the main chamber, and the members' room. So let's start with a look at Town Hall, follow me. So let's start with this room, this is the committee room. And there are various committees, which I will explain in a bit. But this is where we meet, or if you are on a committee, at the moment I'm only on one, the Regeneration and Community Committee, where I'm the vice chair. I used to be on the Housing Committee as well, so, and you decide which committee you want to be on at the beginning of your term, and then halfway through we sort of reshuffle. I'll explain that in a bit. But this is where we meet for committee meetings to discuss all the things that are then discussed in the chamber, or put to vote in the chamber for the whole council. And like I said, I'm going to explain the committee system in a bit. But basically, this is the first room I wanted to show you, our lovely old committee room. So this is the main council chamber, and behind me here, you can see the 12 chairs. This is probably the most important room in Town Hall for us councillors, because this is where we meet once a month for our council meeting or for other meetings as may be required. Each of us has their own assigned seat, this one here is mine. And everything is governed over and run by the mayor, who runs all the meetings and makes sure procedures are followed. We meet once a month here, and this meeting is actually public. Well, there's two parts to it, there's a public and a private part. The public part is, well, public, it's open. Come in, sit in the public gallery, and watchers argue about all sorts of issues. But I can tell you, not many people ever do. This wonderful public gallery here is usually empty. Because local politics is maybe not the sexiest of topics, but you know, it is important because it affects people's lives every day. So, you know, it is, well, it's open, you can come in, you can ask us questions. And of course, our details are public as well, they are literally outside Town Hall and on the website. So you can get in touch with us anytime if you have questions about issues that concern you with living and working in Douglas. But I wanted to show you this building or this room, because it's a beautiful, beautiful room. I mean, just look at the ceiling and everything. We just got the new portrait of the king. Obviously, it used to be Queen Elizabeth II's portrait before, now it's King Charles. That arrived recently. And as you can see the pictures on the walls, these are all the previous mayors of Douglas. So every time there's a new mayor, you get a new picture. The current mayor is councillor Natalie Byron-Tier, and you have seen her already in some of my previous videos when we did the charity thing and during TT. Just to give you a quick look at who else is sitting in Town Hall during a, or in this chamber during a council meeting. You have the mayor in the middle, and then you have the officers, or the chief officers of Town Hall to the left and to the right, to give advice and answer questions when needed. And the chairs of the various committees obviously would be councillors, so they may be asking, you know, the head of parks or the head of housing, or, you know, a question from their iPad, we all have iPads, and we use the council, the committee chairs have a chat app to ask the heads of departments or the chief officers for, you know, answers if there are questions asked in chamber. So you have the mayor in the middle, and then left and right you would have Town Hall officers and officials. Then you have this bench, which is also for Town Hall staff and officials to keep minutes and records. And I'll show you those minutes in a minute, minutes in a minute, anyway. And then over here, you have the press bench, where usually, sometimes, most of the time, members of the media, primarily newspapers and Mancs Radio, sit and follow our proceedings. And then obviously, we have the chairs where we sit. And in the middle, we have more seating if it's needed for, you know, to look at documents and whatnot. So this is the basic layout of it, and you can sit here if you want to, in the public part of the council meeting, because there are two parts to it. There's a public and a private part. And now you're going to say, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, what are you hiding from us in the private council meeting?" Well, there's a reason we have public and private, public, and you can find the public agenda and the minutes on the council website. It's always published Friday before the council meeting, the next one, so you know what we're going to discuss in the coming week. And we will then update it with what we have discussed afterwards, that's public information. But there is a private part, and that is primarily to discuss things that may be commercially confidential, that may have, you know, other reasons why we cannot put it in the public domain, personal details, you know, contracts where a supplier wouldn't really like it very much if we, you know, put out his prices in the public domain when it's a tender process and so on. So there's various legitimate reasons. But we can't always discuss everything in public, and that is covered in the constitution and in the rules. And of course, the constitution is also public, it's on our website, so you can read up exactly what we can and cannot do, or what we're supposed to do, or how you can interact, and the rights and responsibilities and all that. So this is basically a quick look at Town Hall. This place gets really hot in summer and really cold in winter. Because it's, you know, sort of Victorian era, and they didn't really build in aircon or retrofit aircon, but it's a beautiful, beautiful room. I really like it, I like the atmosphere in it, and the smell of the chairs, and the wood and everything. It's a great place, people do take it, you know, seriously and respect it, and procedure is a big part of, you know, running this organisation and the council. And yeah, the people who are here, everyone from the councillors to the Town Hall staff, they all, you know, give it the procedure and the respect that I think it deserves as an institution. And that's basically your quick look at the council chamber. Now, let me show you the members' room. Actually, a couple more things before I go next door, so you may have noticed. Number one is our microphones and how we vote, so it's an electronic voting system. You, you know, you press that you're present, and then you press yes or no. And if you want to speak, you press the speak button and it will light up. So when, when we go for procedure and committees, when the committee meetings are being discussed, then you can ask the chair questions after, you know, what they discussed in committee has been brought to the chamber, and we'll go, "Hey, why did you do this, why did you do that?" You do that by hitting the button, and then in the order that you press the buttons, it will pop up, and then you can stand up and, through the mayor, you always address everyone through the mayor, address your colleague and ask, you know, questions about whatever it is you want to know about. It has to be within a certain frame, it has to be, you know, within the rules, but that's how we do it. And then you can also ask supplementarys, but again, there are rules and it's all in the constitution. So that's how it works with the voting. And the other thing I want to show you are these, you may have noticed them, the red and yellow light bulbs. If we go back into committee, which we sometimes do in Town Hall, to discuss things that require a lot more discussion and detail and so on, sometimes these are being used, the mayor can use them. And if things get too passionate, someone goes on too long, not that anyone would ever ramble on too long in politics, the mayor will hit the yellow button and, or the yellow light as a bit of a, you know, get on with it. And then if you really take too long, then you will hit the red button, and that's basically stop speaking. So it's, it kind of helps to move procedures along. If you see the yellow light go on, then, you know, you should try and wrap up. And this is the third and last room I want to show you today, because it's essentially public anyway, and that is the members' room, where if you are a councillor, you can either, you can go here to work, if you need a quiet place to work, because we don't have our own officers, we're not full-time, or you can meet here with constituents, or you can of course meet here with other councillors to discuss things more or less in private before you go to meetings. So this is a room which is, basically looks down on, where the main entrance is, it's just above there, it's right next to the council chamber. And what you see there behind me on the shelf is actually all the minutes from previous meetings, and these go back right to the beginning in 1896. If you wanted to read up on the very first council meetings in the Borough of Douglas, when the mayoralty and everything was started in the 1890s, 1896, it's actually there. And the interesting part on this one is, even back then, people argue pretty much about the same things that they argue about now. Many of the issues are still the same. And, you know, it's kind of, it may sound a little boring when you say, "Oh, I find it interesting to read through all the council minutes", but if you read through them and you read the old language and you read that, you know, the problems have always been the same by and large, and it's just different councils and we move on and... But the problems that, and the challenges that a small town and now a small city has, they have, you know, pretty much remained unchanged at their core through these over 100 years of existence that the Douglas Borough Council now has. But yeah, I just wanted to show you this room because it's such a pretty room, and, you know, it's very underused, I think, but I do meet here with constituents quite a lot whenever I can, because it's a very nice meeting room. And I just wanted to show you that. So that was a quick look at the, well, the main parts that we as councillors use anyway within Town Hall. And I just wanted to show you that because I know not many people go into Town Hall. And, you know, I want to give you a glimpse of what it's like. Please do attend a council meeting, the dates for them, they are on our website, being updated all the time. It's free to attend, we even give you coffee and biscuits if you want to come, I'll pay for it, don't worry. And yeah, that's, you know, it'd be nice to see more people take an interest in local politics. I know it's not the sexiest topic in the world, but it does affect every one of us who lives in Douglas on a daily basis, and, you know, Douglas Council, I get to that in a minute, what we do and what we used to do. So we're not doing as much as we used to do in terms of responsibilities and tasks, but we still do a lot, and these are things that affect people, and, you know, it would be nice to have more engagement. And of course, our details are public, so you can, you know, call or email anytime. It's literally right outside Town Hall. So that was a quick glimpse at Town Hall. And now let's dive a little bit into how the council works and what we do. Let's start with a look at all the various services and things that we provide. And when I say "we" and I have to say this, I mean Douglas Council or Douglas Borough or the COPI, as people still call it, past and present. I'm not speaking for Douglas Council, this is a video done by me as a private individual. I have to say that, otherwise people in Town Hall might get upset. So with that out of the way, the things and services we provide. Well, it used to be a lot more in the olden days, when it was the old Douglas Corporation or the COPI. We used to do all sorts of things, we used to provide electricity to the town, we used to run the buses, we used to look after the roads, and we even ran the horse tram. But gradually over time, central government took over a lot of these functions. But there's still a lot of things that we as Douglas City Council or the Borough of Douglas look after, and these are some of them. For example, we look after most of the public spaces, such as on the promenade, the sunken gardens, if you know the Beech statue, we put that there. We look after two car parks, mainly the Bottleneck Car Park and Shoresborough Car Park, which is also where you can park for longer if you want to charge your EV, because there's no two-hour time limit, but we don't run the chargers, we just run the car park. The chargers are run by Mancs Utilities. Next, we have what's called Douglas City Centre Management. That's a team that works with businesses in the city to promote them, to promote Douglas as a destination for businesses, and also puts on all the different events, such as the Christmas lights, Douglas Live, the, you know, music festival, and all sorts of other things that happen during the year. Nobles Fun Day, that's us, the Beach Day, and indeed, the beach in general, that's managed by Douglas Council. For example, the swimming platform that we put in recently, that's actually on the committee that I'm on, Regeneration Committee, and I'll explain committees in the next bit. We look after the parks, and we also look after the ferry lights in Summerhill Glen, if you ever went there in the evening, all those lights, that's us. We look after the fancy promenade lights that are in now and other parts of the promenade together with the DUI or the central government. We also operate Douglas Library. Register for free and get access to thousands of books and magazines, or download the Libby app and get it all on your phone. You can also surf the web here on our free workstations or just come here as a warm space in the winter. Douglas City Council also looks after a lot of public sector housing. Over 2,300 units are on our stock list at the moment, including these wonderful brand-new ones up here in Peel Road. So we are a big, big provider of affordable or public sector housing on the Isle of Man, and that's probably actually one of the biggest jobs that the council does. And we're always trying to build more, but, you know, providing affordable housing is a very, very crucial undertaking, but it's not an easy one, and trust me, there goes a lot of work into these. And, you know, having seen these on the inside, they're absolutely wonderful units, and we're trying to build more. I actually used to be on the Housing Committee, and I've vacated that spot for a fellow councillor who I thought was, you know, more interested in the topic, and it's all about doing the right thing, so, you know, I stepped down from that committee. But it's certainly one of the more work-intensive committees and areas of what we do. And yeah, it takes up a lot of resources, we have a housing department, we have, you know, people who look after building new houses, looking after the existing ones, looking after the tenants. So Douglas City Council is actually one of the biggest landlords, or maybe the biggest landlord on the Isle of Man. Douglas City Council also owns Douglas Golf Course. Now, it might come as a surprise that a council would own a golf course, but golf isn't really an elite sport in the Isle of Man, and I love the fact that it isn't. Back in Germany, where I grew up, in the south of Germany, Bavaria, where it's very posh, I couldn't even afford to join my local club, it was like thousands of pounds just to join, and thousands of pounds a year to be a member. Here, it's much more affordable, I will link to it below because I'm a big fan of this facility. It is run at Arves Lengst, so to say, because we have a golf professional who runs the actual facility. So if you want to come here, you want to play, you want to learn, you want to become a member, I'll put the details in the description. It is much more affordable than you think, and it's a great sport, and it gets you out into nature. And I love that we have this. And before you now say, "Well, wouldn't it be better if you built houses here or something?", of course, that has been brought up, but this land is actually not suitable for many other uses, certainly not for building houses. So what we have at the moment is really the best use for it, and I love that we have affordable golf on the Isle of Man. We also provide a number of so-called environmental services, and those include street sweeping, the operation of, there's a brand-new wonderful civic amenity site on the outskirts of Douglas, where you can bring any remaining rubbish and your recyclables, and it also has a reuse shed, so if you have something that you want someone else to use, but you don't want to throw away, put it in there. Then we have a curb-side recycling scheme that we operate, and of course, we do empty the bins. And on that front, we recently changed from a weekly to a fortnightly collection schedule, a move that was wildly popular with the public. Okay, I know I'm going to get angry comments about this step and this joke, and probably an angry email from someone else as well, but it was a required step because we were years behind everyone else with recycling. And recycling rates are now up, and people do recycle more, and I would like to really thank everyone who is on board with that step. It was just the right thing to do for an island that we like to sell as, you know, environmentally friendly and green and nice, so... But yeah, we do provide a number of environmental services, and among them is of course emptying all the bins. The city also operates a number of allotments, they are very, very popular, and there's always a waiting list, but if you want one, I'll put the details on how to put your name on the list in the description. The city also operates Douglas Cemetery and the crematorium. And while this isn't the sexiest topic in the world, it's one that affects us all, and it's actually a topic that I am planning on doing a separate video on, on how this is handled, because there are, I believe, or I think, a lot of misconceptions, and it's one of those things where you really only usually deal with when, you know, you have to, when something happens. But we do operate the cemetery, and we do operate the crematorium. And yeah, I'll definitely meet up with the people who run it to give you a better idea of how this works and, you know, what's involved in this process at a later date. And last but by no means least, Douglas City Council of course owns Nobles Park, which looks a bit bad at the moment because it's just off the Mancs Compris. And of course, you will recognise this area as the place where TT and Mancs Compris are, well, at home. It's where the grandstand is, it's where the paddock is. And this area, so at least part of this area, was left to Douglas then Town Council by Henry Blum Noble back in 1909, I believe it was, that it was actually given. Henry Blum Noble died 1903. But this is Nobles Park, it's a very popular park with locals and visitors. There's a splash zone, there's talk of the town, the cafe. You can play bowls, you can do all sorts of things here, it's a public park that we own and operate. And that of course, yeah, is the epicentre of the TT. Now, does that mean we put on the TT? No, we wouldn't be in a position to do that. For TT and Mancs Compris, we hand the keys over to central government, and we have a licensing agreement with them for this, which basically says, "Fine, here's the keys to the park, put on your TT and your Mancs Compris", but these are the conditions that we attach to it. And we all, we actually had one of those meetings just last week, and we're probably going to have more of them before next TT. But we don't put on the TT, that's beyond the capabilities, I think, of the city council, that central government who put that on, we just give them the keys to the park, so to say. So during TT and Mancs Compris, I'm actually a, well, a visitor in our own park, because we don't really have any say about what happens here during those events. Outside of that, of course, it's a public park, and you're always welcome to come up here, go for a walk, enjoy the toy areas, the playgrounds, the splash zone, have a tea or a coffee in the cafe, and there's also a community room upstairs in the cafe if you want to book that for any events. Again, I'll put the details in the description. So now that you've seen some of the things that we look after and provide, let's have a quick look at how it all works, how we make things happen. And I'm going to try and keep this brief and not bore you to death, because politics can be a bit dry. But I think it's important that, you know, I mention the process and how we make decisions, what we actually do. So councillors are there to, well, we are governed by our constitution, and we are there to primarily make policy decisions. We, you know, come up with a budget and the rates, or if you're in the UK, you would notice this, the council tax. And we do this by a system of committees. So firstly, there are four constituencies or four wards, as you would call it in local authorities in Douglas. It used to be a lot more, it used to be a lot more councillors too. It used to be 18 plus aldermen plus all sorts of things in the olden days. We reduced it recently to 12, there's only 12 councillors, four wards or constituencies, north, south, east and central. Each constituency has three seats for a total of 12 councillors. So my constituency or my ward is south, for example, and that recently has been matched to the ones that the House of Keys uses tin ward. So it kind of simplifies it a bit, because it was a bit of a patchwork before that, it was much more complex. So very much streamlined council these days, 12 councillors, four wards, three councillors per ward, and that's how you get elected. And then once you are elected, we are operating this whole process and procedure by a system of committees. We have the executive committee, and then we have the Regeneration and Community Committee, the Housing and Property Committee, and the Environmental Services Committee. Plus, we also have the pensions committee, which, bless the name suggests, looks after the pensions of everyone in Town Hall. So following the initial election, we first of all decide on a leader of the council, we vote on that as all of us in the chamber. And then once we have a leader, we also vote, all of us in council, on the chairs of the different committees. So if you want to be the chair of a committee or the leader, you can just basically say, "Hey, vote for me", and if enough of your colleagues support you, then you shall have that position. Then following the election of the leader and the chairs, we will elect three more, in fact, no, we don't elect the executive committee. Elect or appoint three more members for each committee, so you have a chair and three members on every committee. You can serve on multiple committees, I used to serve on the Housing, Antiregeneration and Community Committee, now I'm only on Regen, I'm the vice chair of that one. Just more of a time thing, and someone else, you know, cared more about housing and was a better fit, so I offered her my place. And basically, the way it goes is after the council election and when you have the chairs, you can basically say, "Hey, I would like to be on this committee", and then, you know, again, if enough of your colleagues, in this case, the colleagues on the executive committee support you, then you will be on those committees. These committees are what we used to discuss and decide the different, you know, policies and budgets and activities that we do throughout the years. For example, Regeneration and Community Committee, which is what I'm on, we recently put on the Douglas Beach Day, so someone had that idea, we discussed it in committee, you said, "Okay, that's a good idea, we want to use the beach more, let's do it, let's have a Douglas Beach Day". Once we have discussed things in committee, then it goes into the minutes that we, or the agenda that we will discuss in council. So we, we have to meet the committee meetings before the monthly council meeting. There's a committee meeting every month, before, the week before the council meeting. And then we discuss everything that we discussed in committee in council. So the whole council can then see what we talked about and what we want to do, and they can then either agree or disagree, or we argue about it. So with the Beach Day, for example, then people ask like, "Oh, is this really a good use for money? Should we really do this? What are you actually planning?", they can ask this question. And then, you know, if they agree, they vote on the, what I showed you in the chamber, we have this little voting system, so they vote on those minutes. And if everyone agrees, then that's pretty much what we decided in council will then be done. At its core, that's as simple as that, the different committees are all, you know, just discussing their subject matters. And the executive committee has a bit of a higher remit, they can discuss a few other things that are important to the running of Town Hall. But we don't, as councillor, actually run things day-to-day. So we're not there every day, you know, looking after the housing or empty the bins or mow the lawn here. We have, you know, employees and departments who do that. So we are on a political level, on the, on the policy level, on budgets, for example. Recently, the rate is probably one of the biggest decisions that we made, or council tax, as you would call it in the UK. And we recently, obviously, cost of living's gone up a lot, so we had, you know, a really, really tough time trying to keep rate increases as low as possible. Trust me, there was a lot of hard work behind the scenes by everyone, and a lot of uncomfortable decisions. But that's, you know, probably one of the biggest tasks we do, is to decide the rates and the services, and all the things that we do in the city and how we spend the money. So that's really what we do, it's on, it's a political position, not a practical day-to-day position. That doesn't mean you can't contact us, you can contact us anytime, we will come out and we speak to constituents and, you know, visit you and, and look at things, because it's obviously part of it, we had a first contact for your local concerns. We also work with the MHKs, who are the, the national politicians, if you want. But they are really supposed to look after the bigger issues, they're not supposed to look after the bins and dog poop. That's supposed to be, you know, more our department on the local level. But of course, we do, you know, talk to them, and they also care, and there's a bit of an overlap of responsibilities. A few of the things that people may not know about us, so unlike in other places, councillor is not a full-time job, we do not receive salaries. We keep, we receive an allowance which we claim, and that's £12.54 for daytime meetings per hour, and £7.25 for evening meetings per hour, and you only get that when you actually claim it. I do claim here and there, but, so what we claim is actually public record, you can look that up. In fact, I'll try and find it and stick it on here. I think last year I was the one who claimed the least, because I just, whenever I remember, I'll put the claim in. But we're not full-time, we don't get a salary, we don't get any huge perks. We get free parking in Shoresborough and in Bottleneck Car Parks, and we have obviously our own little underground car park where the all-Town All-Star parks. But those are pretty much, you know, that's the only perk we really get. There's no salaries, no big, you know, advantages or anything. It's something you do because, at least personally for me, it's something I do because I care about the place. The Isle of Man has been very good to me, and I wanted to give something back, and, you know, I care about the place. And that's why I sort of got talked into being a councillor by a fellow councillor, who said like, "Hey, you should do that". As you may know, I ran for the House of Keys back in 2006, when I was still young. And I haven't really looked at politics since, and then, you know, I got talked into standing. And the way it worked actually was because there are people, and I bet there'll be comments on here from the usual suspects, I was like, "Oh, you weren't actually voted in by the public, you don't have a public mandate." So what happened in the last election was in my constituency, Douglas South, when I declared there were four candidates for free places, so it was a contested election. But one of the candidates, either she saw my name and didn't like it, or she didn't want to stand again, it was too much effort for her, her plans changed, I don't know why, she dropped out. So that means there were three candidates for free places, and that means we were all automatically elected. So I didn't actually go through the whole election process, you didn't have to go and vote for me, but it is still part of the democratic process. And, you know, people sometimes criticise that, and the leader of the council is also from that same constituency, and people say, "Oh, she doesn't have a public mandate", which of course, you know, this is how this system works, this is how this part of democracy works, it's a representative democracy, and this is the system. And there's always room for improvements in any political system, but, you know, to say there's no public mandate in that form is not correct, I think. But I always invite everyone to, to get more involved in the process. And there are a lot of people, especially after the bin decision, I'll be honest, who said like, "Oh, you know, we're not going to vote for you, are we going to stand and, and do things better and going to run ourselves?". And I, I don't mean this as a joke or to be, you know, snarly or anything. I really, really invite people to, to participate in local politics. I'm not sure I'm going to stand again. It is, you know, fun and it's interesting and it's nice that you can, you know, have a, have a positive impact, an active impact on the place where you live. So I do like learning about the political process, a lot of the things have surprised me, to be honest, in good and bad ways. But I really, honestly, genuinely invite everyone to get more involved in local politics, because this is what affects your immediate life around you, you know? The, the place where you live, you step outside your door, everything you see and do is, in some way or other, influenced and run by local politics, by the 12 of us, the 12 councillors of Douglas. So yeah, I do invite you to get involved. My, our details, like I said before, are public, they're outside Town Hall, they're on the website, I'll link to it below. And, you know, you can always come to the council meetings. If you want to stand next time, genuinely, I'm happy to help people who want to stand. Especially if I don't run again, you know, I'm happy to help you. Get, get your flyers out and knock on doors and things, because that's still what you have to do. And get more involved, and local politics does need, just to round this off, because I know I'm getting on and you're probably switched off now, but local politics in the Isle of Man does need a bit of a reform. In fact, there is, you know, this big topic of LGR, local government reform, which, if you, if you mentioned...